Well, does Pat take his table with him, or what?
Let's call a meeting to order. If you turn off your cellphones, or turn them to vibrate. Next item is minutes.
Move it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you notice, we have a special meeting Thursday at 2:00.
Can't see.
Yeah. Who can make that meeting?
Not me.
Mark?
Um, I think so.
Jackie?
Be able to.
Yeah. We have a SIMCO meeting. And if I'm not there, they don't have a quorum. But it should be short.
Jackie and I have an 11:00 o'clock meeting. But I don't think it's gonna go that long, so it should be all right. Next item is the approval of the claims. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J.D. I'll pass around the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Discussion on that.
Go ahead.
Mark Olson. This looks like the third part-time worker that's quit, or left. So has he hired anybody to replace?
Yes.
Any of the three?
He did replace him, yes.
He has replaced at least one or two.
One or two of them.
Okay.
That it, Dave?
Sandy Nation. What's the other?
That was a reduction in force duty.
Okay. So she just left?
Will at the end of the month.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion for the hiring process.
Sorry.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You'll be back at 10:35 for the closed session. Okay? Need approval of a resolution for the notice of property sale. Or no, this is to set the hearing for the notice of property sale.
Move set the hearing for the sale of the property on 22nd day of October at 10:17.
Discussion.
Thicket.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clayton?
I think we have one more.
What did I miss?
Approval of resolution. Property sale. At 10:15?
Second.
Haven't got that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just here for a couple supplemental items. The night way has kicked off. And just requesting two days off. We can give one for new givers. And one for anybody who increases their donation by $1 per paper.
I don't remember, but have we done this before?
Did last year.
Yeah, we did.
I would love it. I think it's a good idea.
Last year, did we give a day off for the increase of a dollar or more?
Right. Gave an increase for a dollar or more, and also for the givers.
My day off.
Yeah, I want a day off, too.
Was that a motion?
And a second.
Yeah, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So how's it going, Mike?
Good. The only other thing I'd like to mention, and when I went to the kickoff meeting, we were discussing different things to do to inspire people to do things. I thought, well, since leadership premise from the top, we'll start with the top. And I'm gonna put out a challenge for all elected officials in departments to increase their giving by at least $1 per paper. Other than, I thought about doing the, they had a $500 thing, you know. Well, you know, we don't wanna make it too painful. All in one year, so we'll just do a $5 per paper challenge and see if that works out all right. Other than that, we're doing okay.
All right.
Got any other questions?
I like that challenge.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Nara?
Good morning.
Morning.
First item we have up is a approval of a utility permit for a fiber count. Uh, this one is retroactive, allowing them to start to work. CF Industries is getting their communication cable brought in for the construction area and for the new plant. They wanted that done by November 1st, so this is a very tight timeline. I gave them approval pending the board's follow-up with that this week.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the approval of the contract with Dixon Construction for construction of County Bridge X9. They're looking to move in on the project yet this week. And recommend approval of contract for $172,420.
They move it?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're hoping, yeah, this will help us get this done and back open to traffic before winter, so I'm pleased that they were looking at moving in so quickly on the job. Our next item is discuss the request for proposals and consider acceptance of a consultant for the Orange Slough Drainage District. I solicited three companies with a background in drainage district work for the board's consideration. They sent individual qualification statements and summary of work that that show that they're, show their qualifications for the job down there. Did the board have a chance to look those over at all? I know a couple of them are lengthy.
Yep.
What was the dollar bid on that?
There is no dollar bid on it, Larry, because with the issues down there, most recently the issue with dealing with the potential for nutrient runoff into Brown's Lake, it's very difficult for me to have a scope of services that allows them to make a clear bid. I would propose that we do this work on an hourly basis. Their hourly rates for their engineering staff were all very similar. They ranged from $130 to $142 for their top-end engineer. Draftsmen and surveyors were similarly priced. I think the lowest hourly rates were the INS group. But until we have a chance to meet with the landowners, get a current a current feeling for what their desires are for this project, I don't think we can really scope it. What, when I sent out the request for qualifications on this, I broke it up that after the first public meeting, which would be paid to their staffs hourly, we would sit down and work out a scope for the actual design work that could be approved by the board at that time. But for now, for some of this, I think we need to have it set as hourly.
Well, you recommend the proposals?
As I went through the proposals, the INS group, I felt was my number-one choice. They had the most experience. They worked in drainage districts around and south of us. They put a good deal in their proposal into remediation measures for our latest concern down there, which is the sedimentation and nutrient removal from the water. B&amp;K came in a close second for me. They know the area. They know a lot of the residents down there. They've done work in a couple of drainage districts, but they don't have the same level of work than INS does. INS used to be, was purchased by Keel Empire, or they purchased Keel Empire, which did a lot of drainage district work in northwest and north-central Iowa. The INS group has extensive experience with drainage districts in southern Minnesota. They're, they appear to be a very good company, and appeared to be my number-one choice. All three would do us a good job. I think qualifications-wise, INS was the best of the three.
So the only thing I got in my packet was the B&amp;K?
I don't have an explanation, but then I emailed all of them. And I think there was a note on there that they were available in the office.
Okay. Is the cost coming out of the drainage districts?
Yes. The cost would be paid by the drainage district as part of their assessment.
Where's INS from?
INS is, is out of Minnesota, but they have an office in Storm Lake. B&amp;K is out of Sergeant Bluff. That's where their local office is. They also have offices out of Des Moines. The, the third group has an office in Anowa. They also have an office in Dennis. So they're, all three companies have local a local footprint, as well as a larger footprint statewide.
I'd move on INS group. See where that goes.
Second.
It would be nice to have a dollar figure of some type here.
Yeah, I would say that-
We're spending the farmer's money out there.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of that. But again, it was very, it really wasn't something where I could prepare an adequate scope for them to bid on, Larry. That's why I asked for the statement of hourly rates from each of the companies. Again, they were very The initial work, public hearing work and such, would be, would be done based on the hourly rates. After that, we can ask for quotations for the actual development of plans. They know that groups like this don't have a lot of money to work with. And I think they'll strive to be economical, whichever of the ones we chose.
Well, come back, come back to us after-
Yes, I will come back to you after we have the first meeting. We did set up a timetable that we expect each of the consultants to adhere to. The initial one is that they will have a meeting within, I believe, 60 days of the award of the work. They'll have plans back to us in 120 days, so that we can schedule a public hearing for the letting. And the final letting then, the final plans would be available within six months, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patty, Mike? Well, at least it's not being red, so. Watch it.
You're the only one, George.
They almost pulled it off, Mike. Yeah, that's right. Yes, they did.
Wasn't meant to be.
I have a question. There's 15 parking spaces over there. How many can we end up with?
We haven't actually did a layout, but I think we can get down there. This is a photo view of it. I think down at this end over here, at least, and the property lines are printed on this, but I think we can still get another four or five down over here. We may take a look at the parking lot and see if we can restripe it a different way to maximize a few more.
'Cause we've also got parking spaces here that are on the county line.
Over on, over on the cop, over here. This is Triview over here. So, and here's the convenience store over there. Up in here, there are a few spaces over here that I think we can get, and we might be able to restripe the lot to be able to get a few more out there.
And I think that's part of the, you know, there's concern about the traffic flow through there.
Yeah, one of, one of the concerns is that a lot of the people come off of Triview, and they just cut right through our parking lot to go to the convenience store. So there might have to be something looked at to redo the parking in such a way that we maybe make that short circuit a little less direct route, and get a few more parking spaces. The way it is right now, I believe we can meet current city zoning with the, with the way that the lot, lot is, but obviously, we'll try to see if we can get more spots on there. We did, we did take a look at it for zoning way back when, in the early, late spring, early summer, when we were working on this. I can't remember what the numbers were at that time, but I wasn't aware that parking was gonna come up here until about five minutes ago.
But how many parking spots do we need?
Well, in my memo of July 25th to the board, it says, "Current city zoning requires a minimum of 18 parking spaces for the overall building size. There are 12 line spaces on the west side of the building, four on the south side, and room for additional eight spots on the south end of the lot. Changes in the traffic access flow through entry and curb cuts could provide additional spaces and address concerns of vehicles using parking area to access the convenience store without negatively impacting private business operations."
So city zoning requires 18 spots, which we already have on there. So, so we're good with zoning, but now it comes to the reality, do we need more than what is required?
So you have a total there of 26 once?
Pardon me?
Total of 26 with the-
I'm not sure if we-
I came up with 24.
Yeah.
Eight, 12, and four.
I'm not sure if we can get eight of them down there. I think we can get maybe five. It depends on if that, there is a back entrance or an exit out there. If you wanna close that, and give it all parking there, then maybe we can get anything.
Can you do that with fire? Close off a back entrance?
Yeah, I don't think it's required for anything. I need to check over the city with the zoning over there to see if they require that.
Closing that entrance off makes a big difference. I'd say closing that rear entrance off makes a big difference out there, too.
Well, the math doesn't work very well for me. If you've got 19, 21 people plus three at Veterans, talking 24 cars, where in the hell are the patrons gonna park?
We don't have one person per car.
You don't?
No. Included in our numbers are Heather and Mike, as well as Cindy and Lisa Always Carpool. There's other folks that they'll be leaving that parking lot to access the county vehicles. So I don't see the parking as a problem. And, and that, and that includes keeping these spaces in front of Veterans Affairs for the people that will be utilizing services at Veterans Affairs, as well as keeping two to three spaces reserved in front of the entrance door for social services for individuals coming in to access services. You know, we've, we've looked at this for a period of time, and I do not feel that parking spaces are going to be a problem. And, and still provide for the people that are accessing or needing our services. 'Cause I'm not gonna have employees parking all along the building, and then having people that want to access services having to park on the South 40 to come into the building. So we've addressed all of that in our various looks at it. And I do feel very comfortable that there is adequate space on that.
Well, we need to get bids on parking lot redo. I don't know if that's an expensive thing to rewrap.
I don't think we, I think the parking, I think we're in kind of shape of the parking lot.
Parking lot's in good shape.
So I don't think that we have to do anything.
Yeah, the asphalt's fine.
Just restripe it.
You didn't have to strike it.
Okay.
Lot of the striping figures. This, this picture is pretty, you can see it pretty well, but I don't know when this Google map picture-
It's striding on the south side.
Yeah, we'd have to stripe that for sure. Maybe then we have to add just a little piece of concrete over here, all the way to our property line.
Northwest side, yeah, the building.
'Cause there are currently spaces that aren't visible here that are striped here, and there is the room here for striping also.
We can take it, if that's a concern, we can take a look at that, certainly. I knew when, when we were initially doing just a overall, will it work here, will it not? The, one of the first things I did, I said, "Well, let's take a little parking," so we went into the city zoning ordinance, and we were required to have this many cars. We met that currently on site, so I did investigate the parking any further than that. I knew we met what the city, minimum requirements for the city for their zoning and parking at that times.
James?
Yeah, thank you. James of Rugged Taxpayer Research Council. I do have one comment on the parking, and I got a few other questions. I know you said it will work now, but as we plan for the future, times change, people retire, new employees are hired, and I always guarantee that people are gonna carpool. So I'd love to see a solution to the parking situation before you guys actually approve on the RFP. 'Cause that can, you know, you're gonna have to buy the land, and you're gonna be able to just lay down concrete. He's come up with a lot of options, but you really need to see what those figures are and what the concrete options are for that. Another question, or comment I'd like to point out, is that this location isn't on a public transit route either. I don't know how many of your serving people that you serve would use that, and I think the House has something to say with Veterans Affairs not being on a transit route. You know, the accessibility of that side should be looked at, too, as you're determining this location. As I was pointing out last meeting, the renovation costs versus the other spaces in the courthouse. I'm not against this idea at the moment, but it's hard to compare what this cost is to locations within the courthouse, if you guys aren't gonna get some estimates or some numbers, or it will be cheaper. But, you know, another thing to point out, I understand the idea of having everybody underneath one roof, but it is working for the treasurer's office, who has people in three locations. It is working for the clerk of courts office, who has people in two different locations right now. So I'd like to know what kind of actual efficiencies, would be data that will show what the efficiencies of this location would be by moving everybody there. I was curious if you have any of that.
Patty?
Well, I, you know, there's been concerns expressed about the cost before, and those costs coming out of mental health. The office space that we have downstairs presently has been renovated four different times to accommodate the number of people that we currently have. In all four of those times, the money was taken out of the mental health budget. And now we've reached that point where there isn't additional, where we can't have operations. The biggest concern I have with operations is I've got two folks down there now. They are doing the financial and the fiscal payment of services and overview of all mental health services, those two individuals. Do I leave them there and move myself there? Then what do we do with the case management and supervision there? Case management is obviously the largest part of our operations, but that fiscal accessibility and, you know, ability to talk to her and gather the data and the statistics that I need from her to answer questions as they come up on, you know, a daily basis, I need the information within 10 to 15 minutes. I don't need it in going back and forth to computer and-
By putting them in the courthouse, that probably will be eliminated, correct?
If, if you're gonna have it in the same location.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm running back and forth from offices, and how do I determine what case manager I'm going to put in what location? Because these guys work together. They're always talking and sharing ideas and serving up consumers.
And it sounds like you want everybody in one location, which I understand. The courthouse has empty space. Let's see some numbers. And as you said, these are mental health dollars. Those can help provide services. Is there a cheaper option? Do you use those that will allow more money to actually be useful in the services? That's the question. We don't have an answer to.
And, and by the same token, every other renovation has been paid for by mental health funds. If you want a cumulative number on that, we could probably get that to you. But those questions were never considered at that point in time.
But it could cost half as less than what you're gonna have to spend to do this within the courthouse. I mean, you don't have the HVAC repairers, there's a lot of things that you may not have to do, and there's some things you might have to do there that you wouldn't have this location. But we don't know what those costs are, so we're not sure if these mental health dollars could be used for other things.
But the overall goal is one location? So that all employees work together?
Yes. I would just ask the board to show us what it would cost to be in the courthouse. You have what the cost is here, and you can actually have real data to make your decision. Thank you.
So James, let me get this straight. You want us to spend more money?
You know, if you're gonna make a smart decision, sometimes you do have to spend money, yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear from you.
So I think the question before the board today is, do we proceed on going to bid in relocation of the offices out to the Triview location?
Further discussion?
My position is, is that we should proceed with going ahead on bids. We've looked at all of this before. As you say, we've remodeled the downstairs for a number of different reasons for our mental health programs. The building originally was, as I stated last week, was purchased for mental health services. And we were fortunate enough to buy that building so that we could accommodate not only that, but also Veterans Affairs. We've been able to do that. I think that we have answered all those questions. I don't think that we need to spend additional taxpayer money to have an architect look at what it's gonna cost us to remodel any part of this facility for that, for this program. So I'm willing to move forward on, on going in and taking bids for the remodeling of that triview area for our entire program out there.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. I still move.
Sir's second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second?
Aye, second.
Okay.
Call roll. Call roll.
Trip.
Nay.
Austin?
Nay.
Austin?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Where do we go from here?
Still got two people sitting out there.
Back up and start over again.
Start where?
I don't know.
Well, I think we need to look at a space within the building, personally. I thought that last week. I still think that. And maybe also look at the parking, if this ends up being the best choice of the two. I mean, I, I, future, you know, that is true. I hadn't even thought of that. I don't, I didn't even think about the parking till Mark brought it up today, but we certainly don't wanna get in a position of having that be a problem in the future. Or at least putting it to rest, it's not one now.
So is, is that option still on the table, then? If we revisit the parking area? Parking solution?
You know, actually, I just agree with James. I feel uncomfortable moving a whole department out of our courthouse until I see another plan to keep them here and do a cost comparison. I know that you said we have all looked at downstairs, and we have. We've taken a tour down there. We also took a tour on it at Triview, but there's a difference- We also took a tour on it at Triview, but there's a difference, as we can see, of having a solid plan as opposed to eyeballing something and say, "Well, that doesn't work." You know?
So then are you directing me, or do I need to come back on the agenda next week to hire an architect to do a spa- and what areas do I do? Are, has the board made a decision to vacate? Or do you want us to look at fifth floor in the basement? Do you want us to look at the jury room in the middle of the basement down there and renovate the entire basement area for the offices? Do you, are you planning on relocating the assessor up to fifth floor and having us share that space there? And splitting our workers to address that? I mean, what are you directing me to do? And, and do I have the authorization to hire and spend money to do it?
All legitimate questions.
They are. Well, I would say you're gonna have to possibly look at all of it. Personally, I would say you look at the assessor's office and look at moving them up to fifth floor. That's as far as I would go.
And if that would be the-
But I don't know what any other board members think.
If you're gonna keep a split, there's a, a number of my people that would rather be out of the basement and go to fifth floor. So, you know?
I'm not the architect. I mean, you could look at fifth floor, too. I, I just think we don't have a plan.
I don't think you need an architect to look at the fifth floor. I think you need to do some painting and carpeting up there and, um, maybe some telephone internet stuff, but it's minimal.
WCAC's on that floor already?
There's what?
WCACC.
On fifth floor?
Yeah, there's-
No.
What's in that office?
These be secondary rooms.
They're doing testing sites on programs, on the new computers, new hardware.
Are you talking about moving social services to the fifth floor?
Either way.
No. It's not big enough.
No, it, it doesn't work.
It's not even close to big enough.
Not for everybody, it doesn't.
No, but it would be, uh, for the assessor. And the assessor just redid that office down there, so.
There's a nice conference room down there, I think, that he put in. I mean, I know it's not your first choice.
It's not that it's not just the first choice.
Let's do this. Uh, we've got a closed session, a teleconference we've gotta get to.
Mm-huh.
Uh, Jackie, Mark, do you wanna be on a, a committee to, uh, come up with other ideas?
Well, or I'll just make a proposal that we take a look at. I mean, I'm willing to just put a proposal on the table and see if we get a second and move forward with expenditures on coming up with a courthouse plan.
Jackie, I think the way that it's, uh, worded on the agenda-
We can't do that?
You would have to come back another week, cause the agenda I have for today was specific to the Triview office.
But I don't think Triview's out the window. I'm gonna let you know that right now. It's not out my window. The only reason I'm, I want a study done to make everybody happy, but I don't think, I think you're probably gonna go to Triview, but not today.
Appreciate that.
But I also think that we need, uh, a professional study. We just can't have, uh, maintenance go up on a floor and say, "We'll throw some walls up here and there," uh, to put, if we're gonna keep that program in this building. So I would think that we would use, um, an architect to look at, the same as we did out here, uh, how this can work in our, in our facility.
And, and consideration on fifth floor, regardless of how you occupy that, okay? That's gonna have to be done with the same scope that seventh floor was, I'm sorry, sixth floor was renovated when the law library went out, so that you meet the historical standards and the walls are placed so that they are not visible from the exterior of the building.
Mm-huh.
So those are things just to keep in mind on that. So you do need and want to utilize an architect to get that done. Cause they will have to submit to the Historical Society and get their approval before anything is done.
I think someone needs to contact Al Jordan to see if he is, uh, amenable to, uh, moving his, uh, program out of. We've talked about him in extensia. Uh, we should ask him if he wanted to move his program elsewhere in this building without making a decision that we're gonna kick him out of, out of, uh, the downstairs.
Well, he did-
I think he's requi- yeah, sure.
We'll do it. We'll do it. Okay?
So what am I doing?
Well, obviously, we can't move with any action.
We can't make any motions at this point? So come back next week, next two weeks? When?
I'd say two weeks. I don't think we can pull this together in a week.
Well, we have to make a decision on if we're gonna, what kinda money we're gonna spend. If we're gonna spend our-
That's right.
So we'll come back next week.
Okay.
I wanna know what kinda money it's gonna cost.
What did this plan cost?
For a study?
Just out of, for this study, what did this cost?
Between the initial direction to see if the square footage was there, I think that was eleven hundred dollars. I think to do this here ran about twelve hundred.
So maybe twenty-five hundred?
So we've got, yeah, I think there's less than twenty-five hundred dol- I think. I would have to check. I'm not real sure on this right here. I'm not real sure on this last portion here, Jackie.
What I'm hearing, um, if you want us to give you a cost for what it's gonna do to study this, then I need a scope. Because I've heard six different ideas. Well, you can do this, and you can do that.
That is always the problem.
Study them all, or if you want someone else to study them all. I'm not, I don't mean to be presumptuous here, but, um, then, uh, we can do it by the hour like we did this one, because we didn't know what the scope was.
And again, we're gonna have to come back with that next week.
I'm cutting this off, cause we do have this meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would suggest that you and I visit with Al Jordan and put together some kind of a scope, and then we can get it on the agenda.
And you'll be visiting with my office and me as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We have to.
What the parking benefits is around the courthouse?
What's that?
The parking benefits are around the courthouse.
Well, yeah, you're paying for the parking from the alley right now for all the workers.
Yeah.
Mike? Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hearing of any individual or group that wish to make a presentation?
I'd like to give the board a quick update. Uh, your packets contain information about Northern Natural Gases Pipeline. Uh, last night, the Woodbury County Board of Adjustment voted unanimously to approve permits of, uh, two or three different positions basically tied to permitting and protecting interests related to the roadway right-of-way and access points. But, uh, as you go with Northern Natural Gas.
Good.
Um, they are not committed yet as to exact timeline, but we'll report that once it's available. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. About three or four weeks ago, we were talking about coming back today with a result to the overtime issues and the over the correctional facility. We have met two or three times through the last two or three weeks, and just to give you an update, no decisions. You know, here today, it's just an update. And what we've kinda found out that we can probably make it through the budget with two or three different deals. The first deal is you're hiring people lower rate, so you have a vacancy factor from the time they left the hire and the pace, pay rate will come up with money there. The second thing is they do get federal money back on overtime for handling federal prisoners that's not budgeted. That is done, I think, by investigation of the Uniform Patrol. And that money there, instead of putting there, we'll put in the overtime through a budget amendment, whatever that dollar amount is, into the tail. The third one is, it's a minor thing, but when you have a catastrophe such as the tornadoes, they ran about seventeen, eight hundred, it's seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars worth of overtime. We probably should amend the budget, put that in or two, because that's unforeseen thing. Any catastrophe, we're gonna have to come up with money somehow. So a load of three issues to get us through the overtime for the current year. When we talk about employees, we're gonna wait till budget hearings. They can submit their proposal at a point in time. We'll know our task base by then. We'll also talk about a couple of other programs that could generate money. We'll have to talk about it at budget time, too.
What was that first option that you brought? What was the first option?
The differential.
Oh, differential wages. From your high, you know, the equipment, high end, or higher to the lower end. So you do have this gap for a year, but that'll get us through this current fiscal year, and then the two overtime issues, add it back into the budget.
That's, that'll get us through this year.
How much money are we talking about as far as total money is concerned with those three options?
Probably a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand, I would assume. At least it's within the budget with addition of those two amendments. One to the catastrophe, the tornado, which is minor. It's major, but the overtime wasn't huge, but should still be added in overtime for, uh, our staff, their staff handling, federal prisoners that you, who get a reimbursement. Now we get us through, still budget time. Budget time, we'll have to figure something out. And we got a couple of ideas there, most positive for additional revenue help. So we just wanna give you an update. We did not put it on agenda, cause it got handled internally through working with the sheriff's office.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wished here?
Okay.
Good morning. Last Thursday, we had an event here in, in the afternoon. We had an electrical outage, and I wanna thank, uh, Gary Brown for his support in that effort. He was outstanding as far as communicating with department heads, with the electric officials, and the media. And that allowed me to do what I needed to do instead of talking on the phone. So I guess I wanna publicly, uh, thank him for acting as a point of contact and public information officer, so.
John, I appreciate the email you sent out on the, the exact time that this happened and what was happening each and every minute that you were resolving this issue. Uh, it just shows that, uh, you know, the kinda action that can be taken under these circumstances is just amazing. It really is. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else? Need a motion to go into closed session, twenty-one, five, one, C.
Move it.
Aye.
Call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye.